Good afternoon, everyone. This is Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, and this is the committee, the whole meeting. First off, starting off by land acknowledgement, I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional lands of the Acadian First Nation, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, additions or deletions to the agenda as circulated. Do I have any additions? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated. Moved by councillor Lauren Cushing, who have a secondor. Seconded by councillor Sherry Herbert to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, item number five, there's any declarations of conflict interest, please notify me and I'll notify Jenny Porter, our recording secretary, to have your name recorded. Item number six, presentations, we have with us a Mr. Malcolm Seabower. So if you wouldn't mind, you could come down and hit the red button, I'll turn your microphone on, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Malcolm. There you go, you have the floor.
Thank you, Warden Cunningham. Well, I guess I'll start by, first I want to thank the CEO and council for the grant that was given to YCon Gaming and Comics Convention last year. It made a huge difference in the event and helped us bring it back after COVID with tremendous success. A combined $3,010 grant between the town of Yarmouth, municipality of the District of Argyle, and the municipality of the District of Yarmouth was spent on key items at the event such as event security, stationary and COVID-19 PPE, tournament and event prizing, canteen items, swag items for gift bags, and event insurance. So, let's, this one, there we go. I wanted to start out with a slide with a few quotes from our attendees to the event. "This was the most fun we've had in over two years." That was the theme of the weekend. A lot of people came out with a lot of positivity and a lot of smiles. As a vendor at the convention, I was amazed by how well organized everything was. The energy, excitement, and just plain fun was apparent everywhere you looked. This was my first convention due to having, and due to having to work on the weekend, I was only able to attend Friday night, and it was one of the best nights of my life. So I'm probably going to be pretty grinning throughout this presentation, I am, this is one of the most proud things I've ever done in my entire life. I'm so happy about it. So what is YCon? A little overview, we're a not-for-profit, volunteer-run event held by YCon Science Fiction Association. We're an annual event coming back now after two years of COVID, which many events were affected by, so last year was our second event. We aim to grow and support the gaming, comic, and sci-fi base and community of Yarmouth County, participate in community events to support, grow, and improve the life of residents in Yarmouth County, and create a unique event that attracts locals, visitors to the area, supporting the local economy and tourism industry. So we aim to really include the entire county of Yarmouth through different ways of the event. We want to create a fun, creative, family-friendly, and engaging event. Some of the ways we did this in 2022 was create a climb-the-light special for convention attendees to attend the climb-the-light tour. We had Tim Doucette from the municipality of Argyle giving a bit of a nerdy take on stargazing and promoting his business. And we also hold one-off, single-day events called Games Days throughout the year. This one in the photo was at Jacob's Loft Event Center. Just simple little, single-day events to build up the excitement for the main convention in June. So in the community, we're all about getting and building the community. Community engagement is at the core of the event. We were able to participate in the J Strong Ball Hockey Tournament. We hosted 100 Meals two Sundays ago at the Beacon Church, and we participated in the Argyle municipality litter cleanup as well. Some key convention highlights and stats, so we had 448 attendees, which was a huge growth from our 2019 numbers of 53% growth. And even if I look toned down from 53% and predict about 25% growth, we could be at an 875-person event in 2025. And by that point, I am over fire limits at the current venue at the Rod Grand, and we need to expand. That would be assuming everyone with a ticket came into the building at once. I don't want to oversend and disappoint an attendee. So we're on the rise pretty quick, I think. We had 16 vendors, which was nine more than 2019, selling various pieces of artwork, various knickknacks, board games, video games, trading cards. This year, we just launched our vendor spaces, and we've received more applications in the first 24 hours for this year than we did in the entire first three months of last year. And I'm really excited to also say that a lot of those are out-of-town visitors from even as far away as PEI, Newfoundland, and Cape Breton are interested to come down and do vending here. We also hosted an escape room. We rented a hotel room at the Rod Grand and turned it into an escape room for the weekend. That was in partnership with the Yarmouth County Museum, and that also sold out incredibly quickly. We had no more time slots left, and we've had to add an entire second day to meet the demand for 2023. These are examples of some of the vendors. This one was a local from Yarmouth, My Nature's Element, selling various stones and crystals and jewelry. We had a vendor from Liverpool who creates wooden handmade shields of various sci-fi, video game genres, and he did extremely well, he's hoping to come back. We had, we supported various local artists. This lady was from Kentville and made the way down for the weekend to sell her webcomic that she's created. And last year, this was a resident from Yarmouth that had moved away to Newfoundland and made the trip all the way back to sell her artwork for the weekend in Yarmouth and catch up with old friends. It's definitely a very heavy gaming event. We host trading current events throughout the weekend and different board game events. We had one table that was kind of like a featured game table, and we encouraged people to come up and just ask questions about it and learn a new board game that they may not have seen before. We had a few video game tournaments and stations where people could do racing simulation, try out new board games and video games that they might not have tried before. And we had various tables that were, we had set up with signs that were looking for players, for people to start a board game but they might not have enough players yet, and the "looking for players" sign would encourage someone, hey, I can stop and play this game and make a new friend, make a new connection. The cosplay contest was one of my favorite parts of the event. That was a true showcase of the creative works of residents of Yarmouth County. We had an adult and youth division as well, and these are just a couple of examples. We had a Jawa show up at the event with working lights and a whole sound system behind that costume, so that was pretty impressive. Yeah, some examples from our youth division, professionally shot by Michael Cardy, and they would do a display and kind of walk runway, walkway down an aisle to show off their works. Yeah. And then a little bit of everything, at the heart of it is volunteer run, right from the heart, right from the start, when you come in, we wanted to create a positive, welcome, safe environment, smiling volunteers, happy times, and lots of good times were had by We held a raffle auction. Last year, the proceeds went to Red Cross Ukrainian Relief Funds. We choose the, we choose the different charitable organization every year. This year, we might, we were thinking about the Yarmouth Food Bank, for example. People can bid on each item, put in as many tickets as they want, and have a chance to win that item. There was a miniature painting contest, so another way for people to show off their artistic creative styles. So the painting contest was judged by Sander and Grant Kinsley, who have actually competed at international miniature competition levels, and also local artist Daniel Mahood to create, add another artistic view to the judging process. And we wrapped up, one of the wrap-up events was a Mario-themed trivia event. So we had one of our members actually dress up as Mario, do a whole trivia event for about an hour, and just have fun with the participants, that was a good time. So that's my presentation. I'll leave the floor if there's any questions. And again, thank you for letting me present and hope to see some people at YCon 2023, which is June, already booked, June 2nd to 4th at the Rod Grand Hotel.
Councillor Cushing, you have a question for Malcolm?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Malcolm, it looks like you had a great event there. Did you say, what's the date again, 2023?
I think it's June 2nd to 4th.
Is there an age limit, who can participate?
No real age limit, it's pretty wide open. Everyone, we have tickets for really, really young, you know, ages three, four, or five, into the teenage range, and adults, a lot of adults come up too.
Yeah, what's the cost?
So for ages six and under, it's free for the weekend. Seven to 12 was $20 for the weekend, and adult, $40 for the weekend.
So a 15-year-old would be an adult?
Yeah.
Okay. How much was it, you said?
Forty for the weekend for an adult.
Forty for the weekend.
But we also have a $35 student pass as well.
Student pass?
Student pass for the weekend, 35. And various smaller, if you just want to come in for the single day, it's anywhere from $10 to $30 for the day.
So when do you register for that?
We actually put tickets live now, they're on our website, yarmouthcon.com or Eventbrite. So far, we sold 28 already, which is pretty awesome. We sold them as Christmas presents for people to give to their kids if they wanted. So yeah, we're well on our way.
Deputy Warden?
Malcolm, thanks to you and the organizing committee for all the efforts. It's fantastic, it's a good event. Any thought about being able to, I know it's wildly popular, these types of events, I happened to be in Boston, they had a big one at the Marriott there, and there were thousands and thousands of people that attended, and it just made me think, any way to market this through YASTA, and maybe have just a few people come over on the ferry for it? Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's my other, working for YASTA, the side goal is to get visitors in the region. I'd like to maybe have a bit more promotion in the main area to hopefully get some people on the ferry that weekend. The ferry will be running May 27th, I believe, this year, so just in time for the event, which is great. I would love to turn it into a four-digit event and get over 1,000 people, sell more room nights, get more people in local businesses around the weekend. I think this guy's limited, would love to do that, absolutely.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Malcolm. Had the pleasure of working with you a couple of times over the past year, and everything you seem to put your mind to turns to gold, so thanks, thanks again. I find it amusing that Mario's name was actually Mario, so you got that going for you. So you talk about growing, and once you get over 500 people, you may look at switching venues, have you thought about where that might be?
Absolutely. A couple of thoughts have been, the original plan for a second year, if it hadn't been kind of kiboshed by COVID, was actually the NSCC Burge Campus in the gym as stepping stone, but I also want to shoot big and potentially go have the Mariner Center in the arena. There's an incredible, you know, TV screen there that could be played for movies, video games, people would love that. We could even have, add a spectator aspect to it, and people having sit in the stands and watch events on that. That's where I'd love to go someday down the line.
Yeah, I'm sure Mariner Center media would be right on that.
Any questions of staff? Well, I'll just say this much, so 2019 was the first event, correct? So you, and there was no events in 2020 and 21 because of COVID, but I'm very heartened to see that you've doubled your numbers from your first event, even with COVID in the middle of that, and I think just by my math, your estimations for this year might be, hopefully, a little bit under.
I absolutely want to see as many people there and have a quality event and good time to really kick off the summer, and give youth something to do before they head off to, you know, camping, or summer camp, or something like that. Yeah, so if anybody has any questions about the event, just always, there at YASTA, just come reach me out, shoot me an email or a call, and happy to chat. One other idea I think I'd share right now is, I'd love to create maybe some friendly competition between municipalities and town, maybe have councillors come out to play a board game, you know. I'd love to see maybe the warden playing Mario Kart against the warden of Argyle, or Zach Churchill, or something like that. I'd love to get the, our local politicians involved, and yeah.
Little you guys realize I have a son that used to love that game, and I am pretty proficient at that game. So be careful what you, be careful what you wish for.
He's bragging already.
Yeah, bragging already. If you're going to hold the event, I'll put the challenge right now to the mayor and the warden, or any other elected official that wants to see if they have what it takes to take me on.
Sounds good. I look forward to it.
That's already a challenge. Well, on behalf of the municipality, Malcolm, thank you very much for presenting to us today, and I really hope that this event keeps going leaps and bounds like it has been, because a lot of people really enjoy your event. I had a few people out in my store, actually, that were mentioned, had never seen them around before, and said, what brings you out to the community? Oh, YCon. Who would have thought, out in the community, they were actually staying out there at a B&amp;B, so.
Awesome, thanks so much, councillor, Warden, and CEO, and everyone involved. I'm so excited, and hopefully see everyone in June, and thanks again.
Thank you. I'm only proficient in the older video games, not the newer ones. Well, COVID helped me out a little bit. All right, next one up is item 6.2, the REN Connector Program. I guess we have with us is Miranda. Hey, welcome. So just come on down, sit, and hit the red button on the microphone, and I'll turn it on. And as soon as she's lit up, I'll give you the floor, and you can make your presentation. So hit the red button there on your thing, and you don't, I should have told Malcolm, you don't have to turn it off, just leave it on. My skills in Mario Kart helped me out a little bit. All right, Miranda, you're welcome to start, anytime you wish.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I'm Miranda McLean, I'm the Connector Program Manager for the Western Regional Enterprise Network. So as I'm sure most of you know, the Western REN, as we like to call it, goes from, our regions are Digby all the way to Barrington, so Digby, Yarmouth, Clare, Argyle, Barrington. I personally live in Digby and work out of Digby, but serve the whole region. So, you can change the slide. Oh, okay. I, oh wow, that's dangerous. Okay, perfect. So what is the Connector Program? So simply put, it's a highly effective networking program. So it's designed to broaden a job seeker's network, their professional network, and it happens by one-on-one meetings with established local business and community leaders. So it's all about professional networking and helping skilled job seekers grow the professional network with the goal of meaningful employment to come from that. I work with, we call them connectees, because everything's under the connect theme. They are skilled job seekers that either live in the region, the Western region, or are looking to move to the region. So a lot of times, it could be newcomers, and this could be people from within Canada, or people who are immigrating here from across the world, could be recent or upcoming local grads or international graduates, or it could be locals who are looking to tap into a different field than the one they were already in. I connect these job seekers to connectors, and these are business or community leaders in their field and in their area, or in the area they're most interested in moving to. And it's all for short, one-on-one, informal meeting, either Zoom, or, you know, in person over coffee, or however that looks. So what the meetings can do is help these job seekers ask questions about the career fields, the area, maybe the organizations the connector is either, you know, working with, or has worked with. They might ask questions about anything that could help them understand a little bit more the field that they're going into, what kinds of employment there is, workplace culture even at different organizations, and then any further connections to help grow their professional network. It really gives a chance for people to understand the area, the fields, and ask these, the questions that we might think is common sense, but for someone who isn't either from the region or in the field, they don't understand. So they might have it feel like they're at a disadvantage either by not being here or something, so this really helps people connect to the area and the fields here. Oh, I do, see, I was going to tell someone else to do it, there we go. So why reach out? So this is one of our success stories, and the quote, I'll just read the quote quickly. So, "To thrive and grow, a community needs to have a strong skill base, foundations within it. So the Connector Program assists by introducing individuals with experienced skill sets directly to business and community leader," or, see, I'm even, I'm not even reading it, "business leaders, which fills the market, fills the needs of our labor market." It's a win-win. So some of the great benefits for the program, for connectees, are to help grow their professional network, of course, to get the ins that we might know about, but someone might not know, or I might not know, but someone in the fields of, you know, electrician would know a lot more than I would, or someone else. And this really helps someone who's new to the area or new to a field, like a grad, or someone trying to switch fields. This helps them connect to a hidden job market, for jobs that might not be posted, or for whatever reason, maybe it's been posted for a long time, and, you know, or maybe it hasn't, it's just a new job coming out. And also by connecting with leaders in their field, they can better understand the field in ways they might otherwise not know, or find the, make sure the fit that works for them. And they can find out about not just job opportunities, but it could be resources, supports, things happening in the community, relevant information to their fields. And for connectors, it helps connect them to new local talent they might not otherwise meet. So this could be, it helps, by connecting with new talent, businesses can grow and thrive in different ways. They don't need to, you know, be doing the same thing. Someone with a new perspective might be able to open a business or an organization to lots of different markets, or fields, or ideas. And also those, anyone who's hiring, always has that, who's our next employee going to be, who's going to be that good fit that's going to help either my business grow or my organization succeed, and that could be whether it's an open position now, or in the future, or even for succession. And even those not in hiring positions, meeting new people in their fields, connecting, networking, it's always a good, a good thing. You never know where someone that you meet and you connect with is going to be in five years' time, and what position they're going to be, or what, where they might be. They might be your neighbor next year, you never know. And it's also really rewarding. So what could be a half-an-hour meeting to a connector could really make the difference to someone else. They might not have known that, if I'm in recreation, I should look at this particular job bank, or they might not know the things that might be things we already just know in the back of our head, might really help them, and also give them a nice and welcoming way to either get into a field, or the area, or to both. So it's, you know, it's usually around half an hour, can really make a world of difference to someone just starting out, give them some advice, maybe if they're a new grad, or some different ins if they're a newcomer as well. Yeah, oh, next one. And then, oh, there's me. So, and how it works is if I have a new connectee or new job seeker, I meet with them, I figure out where they might be interested, what connections they might want to make, and then I reach my, I have lots of different connectors, and I reach out to them that might work and see, or if it's a field that I don't have a lot of connectors, I want to branch out, I might do, I call it cold calling, or reach out and connect them. I connect them by email for a half-an-hour, one-time meeting, unless, you know, something happens that they decide they want to do more. And I think that's it. And also, if, so if anyone has any information, or anyone knows of anyone who would be interested in being either a connector or a connectee, feel free to reach out to me, and if I'm not the right person to speak to, I might be able to connect you to someone who is.
Thank you, Miranda. Any questions from the floor? Councillor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Miranda. I just, I don't really have a question, I just a comment that I've been involved in this program in the past, and can tell you, I've referred many people to, I always refer people to the REN, and it's extremely successful, and I appreciate everything that you do. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one quick comment. I'm going to echo what councillor Durkey had said in regards to referencing or forwarding people out to the REN program, the Connector Program. It's certainly a great thing, because there's a lot of people recently that's moved the area, that's knew that their spouse has employment, but they don't, and they are in a field that not necessarily you would think would be in a need around here, however, there has been a lot of people in the different professional fields that's found employment through your program, so.
Yeah, thank you. Well, especially fields like IT, if you're not, you know, how do you know how many different IT professionals are in the area, or software developers, or, yeah, things that...
Yeah, anything from welders to engineers, so.
Yeah.
Any questions from staff? Nope. All right, well, thank you very much, on behalf of the municipality, District of Yarmouth, and keep up the good work. It's certainly needed, because we're certainly having a lot of new, a lot of new people moving in the air from not only across Canada, but the US and across the world, so.
Yeah, it's been, even within the last year, I've noticed a huge, huge growth, which is, which is really exciting to see.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Item 6.3, last but not least, the last presentation of the day would be Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Sutherland. You may start at your pleasure.
Good afternoon, council staff. In your package, I believe you have a report there, and I'll just run through the highlights of this, and if there's any questions afterwards, feel free. I'll start out with our capital projects. The Hebrun-Daten Greenville Road and Port Maitland Sidewalk project is reaching its completion. We've had some delays on the back end with asphalt paving. The circumstances there was beyond our control, but it pushed the finish work timelines back a bit, but thankfully, the weather cooperated to make sure the asphalt got done within this calendar year, and that work's been completed. So as of this date today, we're pretty much buttoned everything up, or we're doing final inspections and walkthroughs next week with engineers and TIR, so we'll be pretty much complete there. We'll have some touch-ups in the spring, just because we're late in the year with mainly probably top soils and hydroseeding and things like that are remaining, so. The Cape for Shu Lookoff Project's begun, the contractor will work through the winter there, the winter months, to have as much work done before spring, so they're presently working to install sonotubes and supports for the main part of the structures. And again, with the weather the way it is today, and so they're going to, they're actually going to try to pour tomorrow, so that weather's working good there as well, so. The County Crescent Road Extension Project has begun. We currently put that on hold just because of the type of work that's done there, so got to overlap in the winter season, and will resume in the spring, or as soon as the weather permits, we'll be back on that. So basically there, we, everything's been grubbed down and fine-grated, roughed up to start building back up to road heights and ditch lines, so. The electric vehicle charger installation project for the various locations has also started. All the concrete bases have been poured and underground electric conduits installed. The installation of the chargers themselves and the final electric work is what's remaining on those. The Hebrun wastewater I&amp;I study report's been presented to us and is presently under review by our staff. Our sand salt building direction of that is complete, and we're fully operational in sand salts and storage. Our asset management work is progressing with work being done on data collection, condition assessments, and mapping data. The fiscal operational budget is, we're in our final quarter. Across the Public Works Department, operation budgets are on or near their targets. Winter maintenance numbers are still not to be determined, but with the weather up to this point, if it continues to be... to this point, if it continues to be favorable, cost savings may be seen in those budget areas, and work on the next fiscal budget is underway. Staffing within the department is complete with our recent full-time hire of Trent Harding as part of our team. Our winter works are presently the main focus, but with the weather conditions being good, it's allowing us to get at things that we usually never get to in this time of year, so that's also great. Sewer connection applications, connections from new building permits in our wastewater areas have slowed from the first of the year, but are still fairly active. Issue we have been having in our Arcadia system, it's been a pretty hot-button topic for us, is non-flushable items. There's been a serious issue out there. Mainly, we've had disposal of a string mop head type material into our wastewater system, which has caused Modi and staff considerable time and money to remove them as they jam the pumps and stop them from working. It requires staff to lift these pumps out from the station and break down the pumps to remove the clogged material from the pumps. It also comes with costs from staffing hours to outside pumping contractors and and safety issues. We've also recently identified in the same system, the disposal of a large quantity of used syringes and needle medical items in the same system. This highlights a much more serious safety concern for all. Modi has recently sent a letter reminding residents serviced by their Arcadia system what is not permitted into the wastewater system. That's been kind of a, as I said, a kind of a hot-button issue for us here because we're trying to both educate and try to find out where the source of the the problem is, but mainly it's the jamming of the pumps and the the mop head material that's been our biggest concern out there, so.
Thank you, Derek. Questions? Counselor Sheri Hurlberg, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question slash comment, I think I had confirmation, but just so the public who are watching, this, there was some, I had a couple of residents concerned about street lighting issues along the new sidewalking area, and the CAO had indicated that there would be some upgrading and some change, some additions to street lighting. Is that how I read that right?
Yep. So what happens is we batch up work for the vendor, and when they come to town, the new streetlights that we put in and we budget for every year are part of that batch of repairs and installations.
Perfect, thanks. The flushables, particularly the mop heads, I see that the syringes you've sent a letter to the residents, that's good. Can we do any promo, you know, fire social media that might help with that maybe?
Sure. We've been quite proactive since in the last three or four times that we've had it, immediately as soon as the guys find it, we're moving it over to Marissa, and she's been posting it, right, trying to, you know, let people know it's continually happening and trying to get the message out there to to try to prevent it, right? So, yeah, we are using our website, I believe, and social media.
Okay. And one last thing, EV charging stations, can you remind us where those are going? Because I don't remember.
Sure. There will be, there's two, there's two dedicated here at the rear of the building, two parking lots. There's two in the business park at the Troy County Regional School Board rental space in there, and there's one going in at Cape For Shu.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And thank you to you and your staff for the work that you've been doing. It's great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Next one, Counsel. Next one, Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Derek. As you know, the last few days, we've had enormous amounts of water. And my concern I have, and and I'm not sure, you know, what you can do, but in Port Maitland, there's been a lot of water running down the sidewalk because of because of all the rain. And I'm wondering how that gets into the storm storm system, the storm wastewater system. What I know is there are going for a walk, there are places where you see where the grates are, but they are so covered in leaves and things. I'm just wondering if it's possible to have that checked, to have a look at that and check to make sure it's functioning the way it should be.
Okay. So you're, I think you're referring to from from the store down there, yeah. So that system out there, from that section down is, has storm system that's attached to the culverting of the highways, I believe is how it works. So those areas, it would still fall under the TIR's responsibility, but we tend to also look, you know, same as we do for the ones we have throughout here, there will be storm culverts and stuff that get plugged on the curbing of with where it has actual curb on it, and we clean those off at various times as well, right?
Okay, I did actually call Dawn about it, and he referred me back to you.
Well, yeah, I'll have that conversation with him.
What he said basically was that you would have the schematics for it and that because we did the sidewalks, that that you guys are responsible. So so, yes, if you could kindly work together, whoever.
For sure, I'll have a conversation with them.
I don't want to direct you to do anything, but I know it's a concern in the area, so just kind of whatever you need to do is whatever you need to do.
Little bit of unique, because the first section of it has ditching, the lower section has no ditching, no curbing.
There is no ditching, so there's so, no, and there's so much water that's been pouring down, and some of it could be going into my basement, but, you know, whatever you need to do, it would be, I'm sure, helpful.
Yep, I'll reach out and have that conversation with them.
Thank you.
Deputy Ward. So Derek, thanks for your report. I'm pleased to see that we've got so much, so many capital projects, lots of bullets there, so that's that's great. The EV chargers, they'd be metered, would they? You can use a credit card? How does that work?
They will, they'll have a component of them that would be internet-based connected that you could, it can be set up to be charged with, right? So that portion, that those components are in there?
Yep, yep, yep. And the the Cape For Shu Look-Off Project, so there has been really good weather, so they they may, what's the, what's the, what's the time interval that would be? I mean, I know you can't guarantee because of the weather and that type of thing, but it looks pretty good over the next two weeks. Like, i- is that, is the big thing related to the weather? Is it really getting the the concrete poured, all that sort of foundational type stuff? Is that, is that the piece that's most weather-dependent or?
Yes, right now, the the big thing would be if we can get the sonotubes, the support bases for all the steel structure work. Once that's in place, they'll come and they, all the steel work will be done offsite. So once those are in place, they can come and do the actual measurements and make sure everything and to take everything off of that, and then that can all still be manufactured offsite and continue even if the weather's bad.
Oh, and then they just bring it back?
And they'll bring it back and start the installation.
So that's a really, that's really good, that it, once they get that foundational work done, that's the big, that's the bottleneck as far as the weather.
Yeah, exactly. So if we can get, if those get poured tomorrow and everybody's comfortable with taking measurements off of those, then the steel contractors can come and start fabricating off of that.
Awesome. And just one more question, the mop heads, what exactly is a mop head and how does it, how do they get it in? I I haven't been able to come up with a plausible methodology to flush a mop head into the septic, but maybe you can explain it.
That's a great question.
I'm on my own septic, so I won't be doing it at my house, but.
So the material that we're finding is very similar to the old-style yacht mops or boat mops that you would have had with the wooden handles and the long string.
Yep.
So that's how that type of material, that large quantity is getting through a system. So I'm not sure how someone would get that down a toilet or, and then work its way through the system as well, right? It's, it's.
So it's all, they're obviously doing it on purpose, it's not?
Yeah, I mean, it's either being, somebody is either using that mop for a purpose, either, you know, yeah, it's pretty large cleaner for a toilet bowl, but, yeah, it's, we're pretty perplexed at how it's getting through the system as well, right? Because you think about the size of it and how is it, how does it get down through a toilet, right? So, but we're trying to look at all avenues of, you know, is, you know, could somebody be trying to lift, you know, lifting a manhole and throwing them in or, you know?
Oh, you think, yeah.
You know, we're trying, trying to do as much detective work as possible.
So it might not even be like residents might not be entering through a residential location.
There is a possibility that somebody could be using, has found a way to lift a manhole and throw it in, but, you know.
Okay.
The odds are it's coming through the system, through a flush, through the flushable system, right?
Okay, thank you so much.
Well, maybe we're going to have to show the Deputy Warden how to use a mop since he was little. Oh, just kidding. I I really had no other questions other than it was already asked about EV chargers and it was asked about the the mop heads. Something's really concerning me, some debris that you're, that you said that was going through the septic system is used needles. That's a big no-no. And that's also a very big risk to any of our staff members that unfortunately have to go clean that out due to a sticking hazard and who knows what's in there.
Yes, that was a very large, it was, it was a very large quantity all at once, like, so we were wondering if it wasn't something that was in storage, and then it was dumped all at once to get rid of it. But it is a huge safety issue as far as that goes, for sure.
So I guess I have another question to follow that up. What would happen, and I guess, I don't know if this is directed to you or to the CAO, if it continues? What's the next step that that would happen?
I'll start, Derek, and you can back back me up and backfill what I missed. So the the letter that went out to the residents went to every resident who is connected to that system, and they were advised of the bylaw and the non-flushables. They were advised that the municipality is investigating where they're coming from. They were advised that the municipality has the right to enter premises to undertake investigations, and that if it can be determined where it's coming from, the fines in the bylaw may be levied.
All right. So so that's obviously a summary offense ticket, or is that done through the court system?
It it will depend on the circumstances, so we would engage with the solicitor and our bylaw enforcement officer, and we would talk about that with council.
Well, it's concerning to me that this type of stuff is being flushed, that's a big no-no, you wouldn't do it at your own personal home. Has this all, has this ever been a problem in other sewer systems that we have, like AKA Port Maitland or here in Hebrun?
Yes, and it's, again, it's kind of perplexing. We had that issue in the Hebrun system here a couple of years ago in a small area, and it was the very same type of material. In fact, it was a mop head issue. And then it it stopped. So again, that makes us want, makes us lead to believe that that's why we think it's being flushed, because we've had it in other areas before, right? So, but it's just, what is it used for or what's the purpose? We're hoping that the educational route will help, you know?
I'm hoping as well. And one final thing in regards to EVs, I know that we're going to be doing our budget, and as we all know, vehicles run out. Has there been any thought to possibly getting a a service vehicle? No, Modi, you can't plow with EVs, but our Public Works Department has service trucks and so doesn't the Development Office. Has there been any thought given to possibly looking in to see if one of these would be feasible? And I know they're a little more expensive in the front end, however, the fuel savings that you have, and since we will have EV charging stations around the municipality and they're becoming more common, is that something that has been looked into?
So this, the leadership team has been working on the capital budget, and we have identified that there might be a vehicle that needs to be recommended for replacement for the bylaw enforcement and development team. And so where it's not a a work vehicle, a utility vehicle, it's a better application for electric vehicle technology. So we did talk at the director's level, we talked about specifically if council approves the purchase, specifically procuring either a hybrid or an electric vehicle, depending on what the specs are that that we need.
Yeah, absolutely. As we all know, the EV technology is certainly certainly limiting in in some aspects, however, in other aspects, it's could be very, it could certainly help us out in the cost of the rising price of fossil fuels. So there there has to be a check and balance in there, so it's something that I happen to know quite a bit about in my professional life, so it, the technology is coming, but the applications right now are limited. But I was just wondering if staff ever come, thought about that it could possibly benefit one of the vehicles that that needs to be replaced on the time. That's all I have. You'll see you.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just before we move on from the the safety and operational concerns around the the sanitary sewer system. So I did get a couple of phone calls from some residents who received the letter, and they were astonished about the needle, the medical waste piece. And I get, I just want to put it out there, we've said this on our social media campaign, but I want to reiterate it again, disposing of those products is at no charge to Nova Scotians. You can go to any local pharmacy and get a yellow container and put it in the space where the waste, the needles are being used and generated, and you can take it back to that pharmacy at no charge. Now, I recognize you've got to come and go to the pharmacy, and and that could be a barrier for some people, but there's no need to flush it down into the system, and and it's a biohazard issue, it's an occupational health and safety issue. So we we do hope that people take it seriously and and try to find another way to dispose of that material.
Absolutely. Well, Derek, thank you very much for all the work that you're, that you're currently ongoing with, and I hope you didn't jinx us in regards to the the weather. Actually, I do hope you do, because I I have a piece of snow equipment that I'd like to use, and I haven't had a chance to even start, so. I I hope I do, at least get one chance to use it. So thank you very, very much, Derek.
We've been lucky on a lot of fronts for getting other work done, for sure, and especially on the capital side of things, but the winter's still, still, still young yet, so.
Yeah, I looked at the long-term forecast, it's looking a little bit better for for people who enjoy the cold and snow. All right, thank you very much, Derek.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Excuse me. Item number seven, Correspondence for Action, 7.1.1, Increasing Climate Resiliency Through Tree Planting From Southwest. What's the, what's that?
Biosphere Reserve.
Yeah, it's, it didn't see the B and S. Southwest and S.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just a typo there. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I received a correspondence, council, that was in your package from the Biosphere Reserve. They're interested in strengthening an application to do some tree planting, and they reached out to our municipality to see if there was an interest on council's part in nominating a site for some tree planting. So I reached out to an individual around the council table who I know has some experience with tree planting, and and there's, there's a thought that our Hebrun Recreation Complex might be an ideal site to do some tree planting. Down the road, as the trees grow, it could provide shade for people who are using the facilities, because right now there's no shade area at all there. And so I'm, I guess I'm presenting to council today that I I think that this fits with our values around community development, around environmental stewardship, around collaborations, and that we think we have a site that might be appropriate for the project. If, as you'll read in the documentation, other than providing the the space at no charge and caring for the trees over the life of the trees, there's no responsibility for the municipality, so no cost. We don't have to determine the species or the placement. Part of the project is actually around that, plant the right species in the right place, and they will provide some oversight until the trees are established and act as a liaison. So they're looking for communities who are willing to nominate a space to strengthen the application, and then if their application is successful, then they would come back, and and they may say, you know, that site's not going to work for what we want to do, but they're looking just for a willingness at this point.
Deputy Warden?
Yes, so I'll move that the Municipal District of Yarmouth staff contact the Southwest Nova Scotia Biosphere Reserve Association to engage with them in the implementation of their tree planting program.
So that's a recommendation to regular council, correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, seconded by, I think Counselor Patty Durkey, so seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Any more discussion on that motion on the floor? I do have one question that regards this tree planting. Does that include possibly, I do know that it's species native to the area, but would that also include like fruit trees, apple?
So I'm not an arborist.
Neither am I.
The material references hardwood and softwood. I don't know where fruit trees fall in that.
Actually, they're hardwood. They're very hard.
So maybe.
My grandfather used to make malls, malls out of old apple and cherry trees. Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, are there any other areas that we could possibly think of? I know this is a long-term project that they're working on, and the Southwest Nova Biosphere has received a very large grant, large sum of money to do this, so, you know, if any time, we might be able to think of some other areas that would benefit from this, that would be probably beneficial.
So if I, if I understand the motion correctly, it's basically engage and and work with the biosphere. They may find an area in the municipality that on land we own that is better than that location. So if I understand the motion correctly, I have that flexibility?
I would say in addition to that area.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Counselor Warren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, that was one site that was was suggested. And first of all, when people think we'll And first of all, when people think about trees, they're thinking about the trees are going to go all tangly and big and whatnot, but there's certain species that can be planted in areas like that that would be very uniform and very good-looking. Also, your Hebron Business Park would be probably another place that could be, have some trees planted, just a suggestion to, you know, there's another spot there, right? So that could have certain trees just to beautify the whole park or something.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to move to regular council to engage with Southwest Nova Biosphere regarding tree planting and supporting the initiative. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, council. It's a great, great project that, it's important that we try to curb climate change, and planting of trees is one small way that we can do that. Okay, item 7.1.2, Yarmouth Airport Operational Efficiency Opportunities. You all have that in your package. It's a request for support. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yeah, it's a request from the corporation to partner with the other owners of the airport to leverage this project for the benefit of operational efficiencies at the airport. So the ask is for $7,790 from the District of Yarmouth, and based on the timelines, my guess would be that these dollars would flow in our next fiscal.
Yeah, and I also do believe that the airport corporation already receives support from the Municipality District. They're argyle in that regards. And if you also look in here, you can see that the 51.6 of the heating there is propane and diesel. So that's a lot, and there's a lot of efficiencies that can be leveraged through this program. So I would be in support if council is willing to make a motion in that regards. Councillor Dirk, sorry, councillor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a question to the CAO before we make that a motion. The percentage is given, like, I know we've talked about that for other entities, but does that seem right to you? I feel like it's correct, but...
Mr. Chair, through you to councillor Hilton, I can't see you, but I can hear you. So the ratios that are in the ask are the ratios that comply with the intermunicipal agreement?
Perfect. So I'll make that a motion that we support the request by the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation for funding of $7,790 towards this initiative.
Is there a motion to move?
To regular council, yeah, sure.
Okay, so a motion on the floor, I have a seconder, seconded by councillor Lauren Cushion. Any other discussion on that motion?
Do you want to add the next fiscal year, or you can work that out?
Yeah, just remember, this is coming to regular council, you can add it then, and I'll make sure that I try to write that. So a motion to support the amount of $7,790 in next fiscal.
Better have Jenny do that, yeah.
I'm going to try to repeat what was said here when we have recommendations from the committee of the whole in a regular council meeting, so someone will try to, if I write it down wrong, please correct me. Is there any more discussion on that motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, item 7.1.3, Jensen Hughes Built Environment Accessibility Audit. You all have in your package the accessibility audit of the administration building report and the Hebron Rotary Center report. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So finally, we have some information for council around meeting accessibility standards for these two properties. This is in compliance with existing legislation. So a couple of things around them. Darlene and I had reviewed a draft report, and it didn't quite meet the requirements in the scope of the RFP. So what council needed was deficiencies identified, what was required to remediate the deficiencies, and an order of magnitude on the cost. And so we have those in the report for both buildings. I will point out that it's largely around some parking pieces, some doorways, some washroom pieces. There are a couple of big-ticket items. In this building, this room is recommended for a complete overhaul, everything from fixed furniture to the audiovisual piece. And then at the Rotary Center, the biggest ticket item is around the hard-surface parking to enter and exit the building. So, Mr. Chair, through you to council, my recommendation is twofold. Number one, that these reports be forwarded to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for their review and any comments or recommendations that they feel they want to make to council as a result of that, and to refer the work to the capital budget.
What is this mic? There it goes. Councillor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Would you like separate motions for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So to refer the documents to the Accessibility Committee, make a motion to do that, to recommend to regular council to do that.
Okay, a motion on the floor to recommend that forward these documents to the Accessibility Committee. There we go. Motion on the floor, seconded by councillor Sherry Hurlibur. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Is there a second motion, councillor Hilton?
I'll make a motion to recommend to regular council that we, I guess, move these requests to the capital budget process.
Okay, a motion on the floor, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that? Councillor Hurlibur, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO, is there any, so when I look at page, I guess, 2.1, and I know from part of our discussion in the Accessibility Advisory Committee, one of the citizen reps said, like, this year is recommending that we have more accessible parking at the front, and probably will be discussion when we have our accessibility meeting, which is scheduled for next week, that the parking that we have allotted at the front doesn't, even though it's there, it doesn't really meet the needs. So if a, if someone is coming in and they're using a wheelchair and the curb is there, the curb is the problem. So it would look like, yes, adding a second one would be okay, but maybe even finding another place for it and not being there. And I guess I would never have thought of that until, you know, our citizen rep said that's really not the best place to have accessible parking anyway. So what latitude do we have? Like, these are the recommendations. Do we just take them carte blanche and go with them? Or are there areas that like this that we could have discussion and have maybe some advice on maybe not following through with this particular one, but improving it in another way?
That's a great question, Mr. Chair. If it's okay with you, I'll field that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so Darlene is in the room as well. So the standard that was required for the audit was the national standard in conjunction with the Rick Henson standard. So the recommendations that are in here meet the National Building Code standard, but through the Accessibility Advisory Committee, so for example, if we're going to increase the number of accessible parking spots adjacent to the sidewalk and the curb is an issue, then my understanding of the role of the Accessibility Advisory Committee is that they would address that curb issue and provide maybe some options council could consider to, okay, we're going to increase the number of parking spaces, and we're also going to address the issue with the curb at the same time.
Okay, that just adds some clarity for our meeting next week to know what latitude we have in that. So, no, thank you, and thank you to everyone who's worked on this. I had staff print it out for me for our next week meeting, and there's a lot to digest. There's a lot of improvements that we can make, and some of them seem, you know, simple on the surface, but maybe not so simple when you're, you know, following through with them, but it's progress.
I should add, Mr. Chair, if I can. At the time that this work was being finalized, the federal government came out with the Accessible Canada Program. I think that's the right name. It's a $100,000 cap, and we've applied for as much of this as we can through that program, largely around doors. I think we maxed out the total allowable amount around some pieces around the doors. So we are already starting to leverage as many funding programs as we can to help accomplish this work.
Councillor Hilton?
So as we sent, thank you, Mr. Chair, as we sent these documents to the Accessibility Committee, could they also review them and bring back any recommendation?
I think that was the recommendation, yeah.
Yeah. Give them a good review and let us know what we're missing.
Yep, absolutely. All right, any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Question being called. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. So that was the two motions. All right, just making sure that I didn't miss one of them, because I knew there was two coming. I have a bad way of writing down things sometimes. All right, moving on. Item eight, nothing under old business. Number nine, new business, 2023 Legislative Agenda. Who could think that it's already 2023? Wow. Madam CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you know, you've had a very active legislative agenda since you were elected in 2020, and the process that we had developed to support you in that work was around coming to you every January or February and proposing, you know, based on your strategy, based on what we're hearing from you, and based on kind of our regular review, what we think should be on your docket for the coming year. So Darlene and I took a look at what we had on the horizon and have prepared for you a series of bylaws and policies that we're recommending for your attention in the coming year.
So what is the wish as a council? Do you wish to add, remove, move forward? What are your thoughts? Deputy Warden?
Mr. Chair, it's, the list looks like it's ambitious and fitting, I guess. The only question I'd have is council communication for clarity, waiting council direction for policies. What's meant by that, and what direction would we need to give?
Sure. So you have reviewed a few drafts of that, and the status on that is that it's with counselors. They're looking at it, they're giving it some thought, and they're submitting feedback back to staff in order to trigger the next round.
I will have to say, the first thing, the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw, that's a big one. That's a big piece of work, and the chair of the Planning Advisory Committee and any PAC members should know that that's a humongous bunch of work, and it affects the way that we do business here in the municipality, that's for sure.
We're getting there, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I know we're getting there. I chaired that the last time that we went through that, so I know what type of a process is, so I'd like to remind council, when that finally does come, there's going to be a lottery. Deputy Warden?
So, yeah, I mean, I can comment on that. Our next PAC meeting will be the end of February. Searching for the date, but...
Fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth, yeah, mid-February, sorry. And, I mean, that'll be the, that'll be the big, that'll be the big piece on the agenda for that evening, so that's kind of the beginning of the process to finally get it in place. I'm looking forward to it.
So I guess what I'd be looking for is a motion to send to regular council the approval of the 2023 Legislative Agenda to the regular council meeting for approval. Moved by councillor Hurlibur. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Nick Hilton. Any more discussion on that? Councillor Hurlibur?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the CAO, I probably should know this, but I'm assuming that all of our agenda items for the 2022, 2023, we've dealt with all of those? Are there any outstanding?
There's a few that are just in the last stages. So for example, today, you've got your low-income exemption policy, so there's just a few dangling. Some of them are annual, so you take a peek at your fees policy every year when you do your budget, so there's some of those pieces, but the majority of the work is complete.
Okay, and does this preclude us from adding any more in the future? Doesn't, just add them as we need to? Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. That's one, two, three, four, five so far. Item 9.2, Draft Low-Income Policy L-068-09.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So council have talked about this policy. You talk about it every year because you have to make an adjustment to Schedule A every year. Through the development of our strategy, through some of our conversations around supporting individuals who might be marginalized in some way, and then obviously through a conversation about trying to understand why the program is undersubscribed, we noted that there is an element in the current version of the policy that prevents a homeowner from doing what we call stacking. So that would be taking advantage of programs at other levels of government for property tax rebate and eliminating that. So our rebate is $200. The current version of the policy says that the municipal rebate would be less any federal rebate, which is often more than the $200. So individuals often choose to use a rebate from another program. And so what we're submitting to you today in cleaning up this document is that we remove what we call that stacking limitation, and we're modernizing some language. So instead of using the word wage, we're using the word income. And we are clarifying in 2.3 that it's one application per household. So it doesn't matter about the nature of the relationship of the people who live in the household, it's one application per household. And then finally, in Schedule A, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a correction to the recommended 2022 base rate. At the bottom of the page, you'll see that it's $26,699.06 plus a CPI of 1.086. The province of Nova Scotia yesterday revised their inflation number to 7.6%. So at this point, I think that we should amend the 1.086 to 1.076, which would bring the amount down from $28,995 to, should have my calculator on the go. Down from $28,995.18 to $28,728.19.
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you very much for, Mr. Chair, and all the work on this policy. And I'll make a motion that we move to regular council the approval of the amendments to the low-income exemption policy L-068-09.
Okay, a motion on the floor, I have a seconder, seconded by councillor Lauren Cushion. Any discussion on that? Councillor Durkey, you still have the floor. Okay, councillor Hilton?
Just one question to the CAO. So I read the policy, eventually found Schedule A at the bottom. We're still referencing the 2018 numbers in 2.4. Why would you not, since we're updating it, just update the numbers to the current year?
I couldn't hear the question.
In 2.4, it references the 2018 base numbers. When I was reading it, I was trying to do math, which is never good. And I found Schedule A at the end, so I'm just finding it confusing that we still reference the 2018 number. Why don't we put the 2023 numbers in 2.4?
In 2018, council adjusted the amount to a new base of $25,000. So we were doing the cost-of-living increments every year, and council changed the new base rate to $25,000. So it is cumulative. I take your point for sure. I think the intent of that is to say, look, the base rate is $25,000, and every year it gets adjusted by CPI, but I do take your point.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any more discussion?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is a policy, so this will require seven days' notice, so you won't see it later today, you'll see it next month.
Oh, so this will be in the...
February council meeting, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's right, because we're meeting right after this, yeah. In a normal circumstance, and when we had our regular committee meeting after the committee of the whole, that's when it would come. So in that motion, I do have to ask this point of clarification. In the motion that's currently on the floor, should it state that this would be coming forward to the February meeting or not? Or is that just an automatic?
It's just, yeah, it's... It's just, yeah, it's, in order to comply, it would have to happen that way, so.
Okay. So this motion would not be coming up in the committee of the whole, just so that I don't bring it up? That's, that's all I'm trying to clarify. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I'm just going to make sure that I don't bring that up later on today. All right, item 9.3, hosting a meal. Counselor Sheri Hurliburton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At our last council meeting, we had a discussion and it was passed that we would be hosting a meal with the hundred, 100 meals that the town of Yarmouth puts on. And part of that discussion led to, you know, I think it was, the warden said, you know, we should be doing, we should be doing something in our community, and I couldn't agree more. So I was trying to figure out how, how we do this. And so I guess the easiest way is to recommend to regular counsel that staff investigate some possibilities, some options of how we could make that happen in the future, whether it's once a year, twice a year, you know, yeah. We'll leave it with staff.
So can you repeat the motion, please?
To recommend to regular counsel that staff investigate and report back some options on hosting a community meal or meals within the municipality.
Okay. Motion on the floor, do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Any discussion on that motion? I think it's a great idea. I think the meals program that currently enacted is a great thing. And I had mentioned that I'd like to see it happen out in the municipality, but I think this, we don't really know where it could be housed or anything like that.
I mean, there are lots of logistics to, you know, doing it. We don't know how much money counsel would like to do for this. I know there's another neighboring municipality where their rec department does it, but we share a rec department with the town. So it's just trying to navigate, how do we do it? How often do we do it? We know that there is a need within our community and the surrounding area. I will say that the 100 meals, we are signed up and I'm working on some details for that for March.
March the 6th?
Yeah, whatever that first Sunday...
March the 6th, I think it was.
Yeah, that first Sunday is, so. But yeah, I think, you know, there is a need in our community and I'd like to be able to figure out a way to get it done. Thanks.
Absolutely, so there's a motion on the floor? I can't remember who seconded that. It was Counselor Patty Durkey. Any more discussion on that? Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Sheri had a, Counselor Hurliburton had a great idea, but into our, into our municipality to hold 100 meal. I will say that I believe South Ohio Community Center is a perfect place. They got a big kitchen, they got a big area. That would be a great place to look at for, just because of the size of it and whatnot. So just my thoughts.
All right, any discussion, more discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Just making sure I get this motion written down properly, because it's going to come up later. All right, item 8.4, Roots and Boots Grant Application. Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So last fall, I was contacted by a couple of community members that were starting an additional 4H club. And I know sometimes your first question will be, why is there two? There has been multiple 4H programs in this community for, for years, three when I was in 4H. So in 4H, registration starts in November, which was outside of our normal grants process. They submitted a grant application, we referred them to mark into the process. They submitted that application and were told that it was going to be addressed in April, and they were okay with that at the time. I received an email on January the 6th asking us to reconsider that request because when they did the registration night, they had 75 members sign up. And it takes additional funds to, to start a program, funds that you normally wouldn't put on the backs of each member on an initial startup. If it was a club that was long-term, some of those costs would already have been incurred. So I, I know that I missed the, one of the recent council members, or council meetings due to COVID, and we used $4,000 of our, the last funds of our contingency, I believe, to support the licensing process for Dark Skies. But I would really like to find, I think the ask was for 1,000. I would really like to find 500 to support the 75 families that are, are taking up 4H because I do believe that 4H builds better humans. So I look kind of at the Cao and to you guys to kind of think about that. And if we could identify a pool of funding that we could give them 500, and that's probably 500 less, that they're going to request in April again, just due to their registration process being in the fall. So, yeah, I'll put that out there for thought, but I would make a motion for $500 to, to this 4H club if we could identify a pool of funding where that might be able to come from.
Okay, so there is a motion, you're making that a motion.
Well, unless you want to discuss, discuss first.
I can, I can... I'll put it on the floor. Yeah, okay, so you can put it on the floor, it can get amended. So there is a motion on the floor to, for $500 to the Roots and Boots. Is it Roots and Boots?
Yeah.
Roots and Boots?
4H.
4H Club? Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, is there a second, or seconded by Counselor Hurliburton? Counselor Hurliburton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Hilton, for bringing this forward. Part of my other life in a volunteer role, I, these worlds collide for me. And the, this organization has been working hard with, you know, since they first formed last fall. And a plug for them, they are going to be having a fundraiser and they'll be at the Yarmouth Farmers Market this coming Saturday. They'll have raffle tickets and some merch and some baked goods. They are working hard, the volunteers, I'm not sure how they have time for their family life for all of the things that I know that they are doing. They have community members all over, from as far as Barrington, who are coming and serving the need in the community. So something that's near and dear to my heart as well. And, yes, if anybody can, outside of us passing this motion, can support them on Saturday at the Farmers Market, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Deputy Ward.
So Mr. Chair, through you to the Cao, I think that Counselor Hilton kind of already alluded to the question, but where, I mean, it's a small amount of money. But any, any thought about where, where it might come from? Or, or are you okay with finding it sort of after the fact? It's such a small amount.
Right, so, you know, the way the Municipal Government Act reads with respect to your fiscal stewardship is that overall, as long as you don't incur a deficit, you're fine. So my recommendation would be to expense it to the grant program, show the $500 overage, recognizing that we are on track for surplus this year. So overall, we're meeting the requirements for financial stewardship, but we're showing the expense where it ought to be shown as well.
Perfect, thanks. That gives us a way forward, so it's appreciated, thanks.
Counselor Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this is a separate 4H group that's going to start? I know the, like the Churchill Brothers, they had a 4H group going. Is this, are they disbanded now? Or is this just another one going to be, be happening?
I can't answer that question, Counselor Hilton, your mic's on, so don't, either one of you turn off your mics.
Just answer counsel question. And I'm not 100% sure of that, but I, I don't believe the Churchill Brothers are running any 4H at this time. So you have one, maybe the Winship family.
Oh, that's right, yeah, Winship, yeah.
And then you had this additional one. But like, like I said, when I grew up, there was Prince Charles maple, not Maple Leaf. Is it Maple Leaf? Yeah.
Oh, I knew it was the Prince Charles one.
Yeah, so was I.
So there's more than, it can be more than one 4H in a, in an area then? Is that correct?
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important to note that, if you don't mind, Counselor Cushing, that 4H wasn't present at the exhibition this year, and it was very noticeable. So the more kids that we get involved, you're also helping support other organizations and other events that happen here. So it's a minimal, minimal request to try to get things back on track.
So this won't conflict with, with what Peter Winship is doing?
No, it's in addition to.
There's room for two, that's what I guess I'm going to, okay, thank you.
Counselor Hurliburton.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for a point of clarity, the two 4H groups can exist separately. They have kind of different objectives, like one may be more livestock agriculture, where the other one might be more tasks and assignments and, you know, things like that. So one may be, you know, dairy cows and bunnies and chickens and all of those things, and the other one might be more life skills related. So they can, they can exist quite happily together.
I'll make this comment. From what I see, this is operations and as per our grants policy, we don't fund operations. That's the way it is. We haven't changed it. I, I do believe that a new group starting up should get support. I would much rather see a capital ask because in our, in our, in our grants policy, we do talk about capital and we granted the other, I think it's Prince Charles. We granted them the capital of a trophy and other things. I think this is setting a precedent that, that's, that once you open the door, it's, it's going to open the floodgates. There's lots of great youth organizations on top of 4H that also operate in the municipality. And another thing I have here is in regards to the annual project budget is $5,750. And the expenditures are $7,500. So I don't know if that's grants and sources, if that grant that they're asking for in here is including us or not. I would, I'd like to personally defer this until we could have a presentation by them. And we are so close to our next budgetary thing. I would much rather hear from the group and hear what they do. There's, there's a lot of unanswered questions in my mind. Yes, Madam Cao.
So from, from a policy application perspective, I take your point. And I'm going to offer up a possible solution for counsel to consider. So just because the application says it's for operating, when counsel sends money in a letter, counsel could actually say it's not for operating, it's for X to comply with policy. So in the past, counsel have, under the grants policy, awarded funding for a special event that an organization wants to undertake. So I see in the budget that they do have an achievement day, that they're budgeting $500 for that. So if, if it was the will of counsel to support the organization in an amount of $500 in the award letter, it could specify that it's actually for achievement day, it's not for general operating expenses. And the other thing I'd offer, to your point, Mr. Chair, is that we do expect that there'll be an application for your next round of grants, and we can certainly work with them to have a presentation between now and then.
That's a good point. Thank you very much, Madam Cao, because like I said, I do support young, young people and the different organizations that help them thrive and become better citizens for the municipality. It's just that we do have policies and it is my responsibility as the warden to follow our policies. And I do remember, yes, you are correct, I do remember in a lot of our grant letters that, in there, and I do remember one for the, for the ARC, the ARC group, that one of, one of their grants, they did say operating, but we in our letter specified that we wanted to see it as a project. And then I do remember seeing a report back from them. So I could support it that way. So, Deputy Ward.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think a motion's on the floor. And I think we're entirely too far into the weeds for $500 item, truthfully. And, you know, we can have some conversation about the policy with the moving forward or whatever, but I think the motion's just fine the way it is. I don't want to complicate this, I don't want to monitor what they're spending the $500 on. So that's the next question. Are we going to go ask them after the fact, have they spent it? I'm not interested in that at a $500 level. So I, I, I think we just, I'll call, I'll call the motion as presented. I'll call a question on it, and unless anybody's got through the chair, any other comments, and we can vote on it, move on, thank you.
All right, question being, any more questions? If not, any more questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nay? Vote a five to one, motion is carried. Pardon me?
Jim's asking if you want your name recorded.
Item 9.5, Rockville Multi-Use Trail. And in there, in the package, there's Kelly's Cove Trail Summary. Madam Cao? Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, and I did request to have this added to the agenda. My request was originally to have the things that you have since added brought to the table. So I, I thank you for the work that's been put in already to bring this back to the table. And I'm wondering if Derek's still with us in relation to this? So I'll, I'll ask the Cao if there's any information that you guys want to present before. Maybe I make a final comment on it.
Sure, and with leave of counsel, I'll just ask Derek to come down. Derek was on the team when we, when we built this asset, so he's very, very familiar with it. And I think part of the challenge with, you know, level of service for this trail is, is around people understanding the difference between a trail, a multi-use trail and a sidewalk. So there's, there's that piece. And, and I feel like it's, it's laid out in the summary that this is definitely, you know, a multi-use trail, it's, it's not a sidewalk. And because of its categorization, that impacted certain elements like when you pass by a driveway. So when we build a sidewalk, for example, and we come to a driveway, our sidewalk interrupts the driveway. It's not that way with this asset. The driveway interrupts the trail, and that's by definition, by design. And so, you know, there are some challenges with ongoing repairs and maintenance because we don't have any rights to affect any change in, in those driveways. In one picture, for example, there's, there's a rock, and, you know, that's a safety issue for trail users. So how do we navigate that? And it's, it's about conversations, it's about relationship. And then because, you know, there's no curbing and things like that, the grass clippings continue to be a problem. So, you know, Derek and I had chatted about this asset last fall, and he, as you can see, he's laid out kind of his plans for the coming year to do, you know, pretty significant repairs and maintenance. So I'll defer to him to describe exactly what it is he's outlined.
Yes, so again, where it is, it's a natural surface, you know, in the last year, especially this last summer, with the grass growth, there's been a challenge. The edges, where you're dealing with the ditch edges and, which is grass, and then certain lawns in certain areas, as that wants to constantly grow into that, into that material. So our plan is to go back and turn that over with our back blade. We have a double blade grader for the tractor that we can turn that over with, pull that material out, and then look at resurfacing it with the similar materials. So the material that was used on that was a crusher dust material through the Aberdeen pit. And so we can, it's readily available to us again. So we'll put that material, another layer of that, and then roll it again, compact it and roll it in the same way it was done the first time.
Counselor Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Derek, I look forward to seeing, seeing that done. What I'm wondering, is there a plan in future to keep it maintained as opposed to letting it get to the, the same state?
Yeah, well, like I said, this past year with the grass growth was seen to be the worst we'd seen it, like growing it from the sides, right? So typically what we'll do is we mow the edges, we mow the ditch side of the edge. And again, because of the highways ditch, depending on how much is mowed in there. So we'll keep it mowed back on that side. And then if we're passing by an area, there's some areas that are just field, really field and not actual homeowners' lawns. So if, if the home... and not actual homeowners' lawns. So if, if the homeowners mowed right out to it, then we'll, the field edges, we'll mow them back a strip on the side to try to help maintain that actual walking surface. That's the key to it, is to maintain the, the surface of it.
Deputy Wardens?
Thanks, Derek, for your comments. It is difficult to maintain that, that, a, a natural type surface as you indicate. Having said that, yeah, it, it does seem to reach a certain point and then it just goes. I know, I know if you've got gravel in your driveway, you know, the organic material gets in, it seems fine. Then all of a sudden it seems like over weeks it's, it starts. So anyway, glad to hear that you're going to get out there and sort of remove the organic material and, and resurface it with the crusher dust again. So I think that should solve it. Just one, one question. I know our CEO alluded to the fact that like that rock, for instance, as a, for instance, that, that's obviously on some, probably from my understanding what's been said, that's on somebody else's property in a sense.
Yes.
Right? So, so how, how do you go about, what are the mechanics going about? Like, do, do you have to actually have like a signed letter saying you can remove it and, and how it's remediated and all this type of thing? How, how does that work?
Well, typically when the trail was built, it was built to stop and start at existing driveways. So the existing driveway as it was, as it was intended to be built, we didn't have any jurisdiction or, or change anything in the driveways per se, right? So we just would go, come up to the, the existing driveway and then start on the other side again. So, you know, if there's an issue with that in a, in a, in a homeowner's driveway, I guess it would be, you know, we'd have to, you know, probably speak with the homeowner, see if they're willing to, to address that if it, you know, if it's an issue. But as far as the construction went, we didn't, we didn't impact the actual crossing of the driveways.
Counselor Hilton?
So something funny about that rock is it's since had concrete poured over top of it. So it won't be a problem until the frost drives it through the concrete in another, in another five to 10 years. And the gentleman's recently moved here from South Africa. So I'm not undersure, I'm not sure if he understands the idea of frost yet, but he will. Wonderful family and have become great friends of mine. So it is, but that's not the only driveway. That's probably an issue along that route. And it is a little bit ludicrous to think that we can have a trail that has sections every, you know, every couple hundred feet that aren't maintained the same way as the rest of the trail. We have people in, in that area that walk that trail with walkers. Because you can't walk on the side of the highway these days. It's just too dangerous. So, you know, I'm happy, my goal today was to kind of figure out what we were doing this year. But you, you know, and not so much to Derek, but to council and, and our CAO, we just watched the town install multiple multi-use trails and pave them through grant funding, federal funding. I think the conversations, although I wasn't here, started with this trail eventually being asphalt, ended up with the dirt. But the discussion with the residents at some point was we can look at putting a hardtop surface on this at some point. So although the information just kind of came to me yesterday, probably at some point, there's another discussion on how we can better maintain this because everyone wants one. Everyone wants a sidewalk. We know that. It's probably the most expensive thing we do. We know that. We're talking about accessibility at the same time. And then we're providing these citizens with a dirt trail to walk, you know, the majority of which are probably seniors in that area to walk with their walker. So although it was a very expensive dirt trail, it's probably not the proper solution for what goes there. So I, I can't thank you enough for bringing what you did, the information forth that you did today in such a timely manner. But I do think at some point, we probably, seeing how it's the only one and we don't really have policies for that one, have to address, you know, what maintenance you would do to that every year, but also how you improve on that over time and maybe look out for grants that we could use to, to put a permanent hardtop on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Sidewakes are, sidewalks are always a piece of infrastructure that, that a lot of people want. And I also hear that a lot of people, out in my district anyway, say, what do I pay for sidewalks? And the discussion of area rates and other things have got to be brought up as well. There's one thing that I will mention that the pictures that Counselor Nick Hilton supplied is an invasive plant species, a Japanese knotweed. That's going to be difficult to control because that stuff is almost impossible, although, although you could do it with rock salt and stuff, get rid of it. But it's an invasive species that obviously is afflicting this sidewalk, but unfortunately it's affecting many properties and road sides all across southwest Nova. And that's going to be a humongous problem. And that stuff even grows in cracks of concrete because I have some at home that's grown in cracks of concrete. So.
Yeah. There's, there's one problem area there with the drainage. A lot of it's growing up through a drainage area. So.
Yeah.
Tallness of it is actually in a stream coming out of a drainage stream there from a field. So it's got all the, all the right things to grow. It's got water. It's got.
Yeah. That, that stuff will grow on concrete. I, I truly believe it. And it's becoming an ongoing problem, not only for obviously the municipality of Yarmouth, but also other provincial and federally owned infrastructure. And yeah, because that's a big patch though. I think it's the second or third picture that Counselor Hilton supplied. So yeah, it's going to be a problem. So any more discussion on that item? Hearing none? Moving on. Item 9.6, Shebog Road, Sand Beach Corner. Counselor Nick Hilton, you asked to have this added to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the last two weeks, we've seen two significant accidents in the corner just past the Wyman Road on the Shebog Road in Sand Beach. I think it goes fairly unnoticed. The, the number, it's not the number of accidents, it's the severity of the accidents that happen on this corner. There was a young guy killed last year. Not the first on this corner. The car, seven days ago, rolled multiple times. I happened across the one that happened last, a couple of days ago, where a car hit the culvert and completely, and went end to end, over top, flew 20 feet and landed on its roof. And the neighbors, it seems like on a more than yearly basis are hauling people out of their cars, disoriented, bleeding, dead, wounded. Like it's, it's, it's quite, it's quite shocking to be honest. So I know, not our road, not our problem, but I feel like we need to send a letter to, and I'm probably looking for a little bit of help here, the RCMP and Department of Transportation to assess the safety on that corner, identifying the fact that there is no signage coming from either direction. And also just the dangers, not, the dangers not just to the drivers, but to the homeowners that are, are living on that corner. So I'll make that a recommendation or a motion to regular council.
So a motion to send a letter to the RCMP and DOT to?
And maybe Zach as well. And any other suggestions that, of people that might be able to help us? We'll leave that to the CAO.
So a motion to send a letter to the MLA, Nova Scotia Public Works. I gotta make sure I do that properly. And RCMP. So you want that motion to, to look into the situation there or?
Well, to, yeah, to address the safety concerns and the, the limited amount of signage present and the concerning number of, and severity of accidents.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Madam CEO?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, and this really is just a, a point of inquiry. So there's likely none of those yellow signs with the black arrows or guardrails or nothing like that there?
Actually, I can answer that question because I went down there Sunday. There's an email that I sent Counselor Nick Hilton. I thought it was farther down that you were referring to in, in the Sandy Point area, but it wasn't. I know exactly where you're talking about. Going down the hill, coming from the town, just past the Wyman Road, that right-hand corner. And you're absolutely right. There's no signage, no, no signage to slow down, that there's a corner coming up.
The next corner there is and the next corner there is.
Yeah, but not that one.
So, Mr. Chair, just before I'm through, I do want to share with council, I did pull our map on that. And I did verify, we have really good streetlight coverage there. So as far as, you know, kind of what the municipality can do, we do, I'm, I'm counting from the Wyman Road corner, I'm counting one, two, three, every, every other or every third pole, there, there's a street light. So we do have good streetlight coverage there. So I just wanted to confirm that with council.
Yeah. And one of the main reasons why I drove down there is because when the CAO had, had mentioned to me that this was going to be on the agenda and as per your email, Counselor Hilton, I thought it was farther down to, to see if there was any municipal infrastructure that was there. And actually that other corner, there wasn't. But this one there is. All right. I'm going to open up the floor. Counselor Lauren Cushing?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Hilton, I know exactly where that, that area is. Back in the eighties, there was a, a young man that was in a, he's in competition with me with the landscaping. He was killed in that corner. And although signs would be helpful to have there, it's just the way that frigging corner lay, lays, lies out there in the, going down the hill. You can put signs, but people with these, seeing these advertisements on TV with the cars, how they can go around corners and stuff like this is, you know, just the way the road is constructed is always going to be a problem. But speed signs certainly will help and, and signage to indicate sharp turn, you know, it would be very, very helpful. But unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast that it's, the way it's constructed. So it's a terrible thing. And yes, it's, you know, it's too bad there's, I don't know what else could be done. Thank you.
Counselor Hilton?
Just some final thoughts on that. I agree with Counselor Cushing and the residents there agree as well that signage will not fix the, isn't, and maybe in the letter, we could specify something along that lines, that signage isn't necessarily the answer. They really do need to look at the elevation and sharpness of the corner because it is, it is an issue. Actually, one of those accidents happened going one way and one of them happened coming back the other way. So it's a, it's a, it's a blind corner in a lot of ways. And then you get a significant amount of error when you come around it. So anyway, thank you very much and I'll leave that with staff.
All right. Motion on the floor to move to regular council to send a letter to the MLA, Nova Scotia Public Works and RCMP in thrusting safety concerns. And I didn't write it all down. Good thing I'm repeating it. In the, it's Sand Beach, correct?
Yeah.
Jenny's.
Pacific numbers are in my log.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.7, Coldest Night of the Year 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we do have an ask. Sorry. I didn't.
No, I said Madam CEO.
Yep. Okay. Yeah. So we do, we do have an ask in your package to support the Coldest Night of the Year initiative again. So we, we may have not clearly communicated to the group about, after we supported them last year, about the cycle and the process. So we do need to bring this before council for the event that's about to take place this winter. And they are working with Mark to get their application in, in the right cycle and the right timing for their winter 2024 event. So we do have, you know, kind of a late ask, but I do feel like maybe it wasn't clear for them on the cycle.
What is the wishes of council? Counselor Hilleberg?
I would, I'll make the motion and then we can open it up for discussion. So I have some comments as well. Make a motion that, to recommend to regular council that the municipality of District of Yarmouth sponsor the coldest, coldest night of the year in the amount of $500.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second there? Seconded by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham. Discussion. Counselor Hilleberg, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO. But that would, that would have been my comment. I was looking back through our grants from last year and they weren't in the original submission. And so my ask was going to be, can we reach out to them and make sure that they are applying now for 2024? And I think that that might happen, you know, with nonprofit organizations where they know that it's happening, but they don't realize that they have to plan a year out. So I appreciate that. And I just want to say that it's a great, you know, a great event. And, you know, it's raised a lot of money that stays in our community. You know, we can, we can give and we can support, you know, things that are local. And this is, you know, very important, important work in our community. And even though, you know, their, their shift house is in the town, I know they do serve, you know, residents in, you know, our communities in Shelburne and Yarmouth counties combined. So I'm, you know, fully in favor of supporting it, but just make sure that they're in the queue for next year. Thank you.
Counselor Hilton?
A question to the CAO. So where this is brought as advertising, you know, like we've done Jay Strong and Cook's Cup and things like that, is that a pot of money that we could access for this?
Right. That's what my intention would be for this year. Rather than have it flow through grants, this is an ask for advertising. So we'll use your advertising budget. But like I say, Mark is working with them to actually have an event sponsorship application come through your grants process.
Yeah. And I, I actually had a question along the same lines, wondering if we shouldn't commit it from the next budget for this year, for the next budget, only to add on another $500 for the 2024 event. But yeah, that works. I never thought of the advertising one. We'd already done that. So any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item 9.8, Nova Scotia Public Works and Transportation. Counselor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As with, I'll give a little history. And as with Counselor Hilton with his, the Shebog Road, Sand Beach Corner, Highway 304, the letter that we had sent off to, to the public works, there is a bad corner on that one too, where back in the early seventies, I knew a, again, a young guy who'd come around the corner too fast and was, was killed, right? Died there. So Highway 304, number one is, is designated as a blue route through the province of Nova Scotia. I don't think our municipality had anything to do with that, but they designated that. And there's several areas along the Highway 304 that are dangerous. And like I said, we, we did send one letter off and from, and I don't know if we've, we've heard back from them or not, but there's other places from, from John's Cove Beach to the lighthouse. And after the, the storm surge we had back in '22 with, with the high course tides, there's a number of areas along that road are in desperate shape. And I don't know what the, the exact width of a blue route is supposed to be, but I do know one, one part of the, just past the John's Cove Beach is only, there's six feet wide to the, to the center of the line with a big hole on, on, on the side. And there's buses, school buses and, and a few trucks that travel that road twice a week that meet right in that particular area. So it's, it's very important that, that this is discussed. And I'd like to have our CAO send a letter to Nova Scotia Public Works and Transportation to come to a meeting so we can discuss that area, Highway 304. But I'm sure there's other places in our municipality who are in danger situations. So I would ask if, do we need a motion to ask for them to come for a presentation or not?
I would prefer.
Just a request?
I would prefer that we do it that way.
Okay. Well, I like to.
So you asking to, to recommend to regular council a motion to invite Director of Public Works or?
Yes.
Invite, invite members from Public Works to?
To have a sit down with us.
Sit down with council and discuss road issues?
Yep.
Motion on the floor by Counselor Lauren Cushing, seconded by Counselor Nick Hilton. Any discussion on that motion? The one thing I will say, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of them. There's no doubt in my mind. We used to have regular meetings with, with staff members of the public works, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't try to meet with, try to get a meeting set up with a regional manager.
I think that would be better.
I wish. Counselor Hilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Cushing, for making that motion. If you followed the, the roads report put out by the province this year, you'll see that the airport stretch also a blue route, also with narrow roads, also with no shoulders, no paved shoulders that we thought was going to be done this summer is now been put off till 2025. So, you know, we have significant road issues here that aren't being addressed and there's severe safety issues. So I look forward to that meeting.
Any more discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. All right, council, that ends the agenda items for this committee as a whole. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor, I heard Counselor Lauren Cushing and then I seen Counselor Patty Durkey. So moved by Counselor Cushing and seconded by Counselor Durkey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.